Good morning, every... You already know where this is all going. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 5th Board of Trustees Meeting. Can we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Camille, would you please call the roll?
The trustee's side.
Present.
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 Present, and we have no appointments today, so we will move to presentations. But Nick, if you would allow me to have the Eastchester Irish American Club present first. They will be short, they promised, so we're gonna keep tabs. The St. Patrick's Day Committee will come forward and present, and I will let you guys introduce yourselves.
Yeah, all right, sorry about that. I yield back my time. So, my name is Pat Murtaugh. I have been a board member for a long, long time. We have a very short period of time, so I don't want to go into too many ad弥rations about ourselves, but we are here for yet another spring into St. Patrick's Day or St. Patrick's Month. This year in Eastchester, we are honoring a local business leader, and I'm sure there's nobody in this room that does not know who John Fixx is and Judy Fixx. Institutions in this town. There was two places I went to when I moved to this town and bought my house in 1991. One was Coors, Paint and Glass, and the other was John Fixx. And, you know, you meet warm people. We're known for our warmth in Ireland. There was nobody warmer than John and Judy Fixx over there, still to this day, although they no longer own Cornell's True Value. They are some of the warmest people you could ever meet. Fantastic. You know, what they mean to this town, what they do for this town, both Eastchester and Tocco, is tremendous, whether it's the Chamber of Commerce, whether it's Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, breweries, you name it. You go to the Cornell's True Value, you can get anything from the smallest brew to the largest pint of Guinness you could ever want. Brewed by himself. If you've been down to his basement, if you haven't, it's an experience. If you have, you know what I'm talking about, because he's got all kinds of brew kits down there. Very involved, obviously, with the brewery itself on... Thank you, Marblehead, next door to the hotel. John has been a fixture in this town. He has sold us many fixtures, plumbing, electrical, and everything else. It is an amazing name for somebody who owns a hardware, John Fixx. I've always said that to him. We are blessed that he has got Irish ancestry in his blood. He is going to lead us up the road. And for those of you who don't know, John had an unfortunate illness. And the first question he asked the doctor when he went back for his checkup was, "Will I be capable of walking up Route 22 for about two miles?" And the good news is, he was given the all-clear so far. So, please keep John in your prayers. He's a wonderful man. We don't want anything to happen to him as he's walking up the road. But, I can't, I don't, it's not enough time, and I know you guys are in a rush, to talk about this man and what he does mean to this town and what Cornell's means to this town. And Judy, I mean, his wife, between the two of them, their involvement in everything with the Historical Society, Eastchester 5K, you name it, they've done it. We also, in addition to him, and I'll allow my partners to say more, in addition to him, we're honoring two, you know, again stalwart members of the Tocco and Eastchester community, Billy and Patty George. Billy George, a town fireman, Patty George, working in the town of Eastchester with Anthony Colavita, our supervisor up there. Two people who just have worked tirelessly for not only, again, the town, but for our organization. Billy George, life dreams to see Cardinal Dolan walking up this street, which, you know, as you said, Mrs. Mayor, some of your best friends ask you, "When is the parade coming up?" I think we're, I think, one of the second, the most popular parade in Yonkers, or sorry, in Westchester County, outside of Yonkers. Yonkers and Kimball Avenue is huge, but this parade took off like we never thought it would. What is it now, Brendan, 16 years ago? 18, that's right, I forgot about COVID. So, it's really surprised all of us, but we love what it does for this town and what it gives to this town and what it brings to this town, which is an enjoyment that everybody takes part in. The Irish, as I said, are known for their sense of humor. They're also known for a good time. And come March 10th, you will have a good time when we roll out the bands again, and I'm gonna let Brendan Lynch, co-chair of the parade, talk more about that parade. Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you, Pat. Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. I think Pat took two and a half minutes, but I'm well used to it. So, I just wanted to run down our scheduled events for St. Patrick's Day here in Eastchester, Tocco, and Bronxville. On the 23rd of February, which is a Friday, at 7:00 PM, we will be rolling out two commemorative beer brews in honor of St. Patrick's Day here in Eastchester. We'll be rolling out an Irish Pale Ale and an Irish Stout. We'll also have the Grand Marshal, John Fixx, that night, so it's sort of a meet and greet. We'll also have the New York City Department of Sanitation Pipe End for entertainment, as well as the Hendry, Sylvester, McNamara Irish Step Dancing School. So, that's the 23rd. It's a community event. It's open to anybody, just come and enjoy the evening and enjoy the entertainment and meet the Grand Marshal.
And did you say that was at Broken Bow?
On March 2nd, we also have our big event. It's our gala, and this is where we install our Grand Marshal for the parade, as well as the aides and the honorees. It's a dinner dance, a buffet, and we have live music, a live band. We have Bagpipers, a step dancing group, as well as a traditional Irish music group during a cocktail hour. So, if you want more information on that, you can visit www.eastchester.org, and you can find all the information. And if you want to attend, you can actually click on the link, and it'll take you to a PayPal page. And then lastly, on March 10th, this is probably the big event, it's the actual parade, and it's at 3:00 PM. It's same as usual. It starts at ICS parking lot, and it runs north to Lake Isle. This year, we're looking to have eight pipe bands, five brass bands, three Irish step dancing schools, and two Irish music schools, and 20 other community groups. Everybody is welcome. We actually have a banner for elected officials for both Tocco, Eastchester, and Bronxville, so we expect to see everybody there the day of the parade. And we're also running our shuttle buses, so if you want to drive and have your car, you can leave it at Lake Isle and hop one of our shuttle buses, and we'll bring you back down to the parade formation area at ICS. And this way, then, your car's up at Lake Isle, so when the parade's over. So, it's gonna be a good day. Let's all hope for a sunny day and no rain, so...
It will be. We passed a resolution, no rain.
Very good. Just thank you for your time.
Thank you. May I just recognize the vice chair, vice president of the Eastchester Irish American Club, Jerry McLaughlin, who's also here with them. Thank you. Thank you. All right, so next up, we have Nick Zanzano, who's going to give us one of his snippets of Tocco history. Thanks, Nick.
Nick Zanzano, Tocco Village historian, mayor, trustees. We're gonna take a look at the Tocco Movie Theater, the Lyric Theater.
Okay, let's see if David knows how to use Zoom.
We got it? We don't have it.
I'm not the presentation.
You can see it on your end?
Oh, we can't see it here. Wade, can you? Okay, thank you.
We can't see the other speakers, so people spoke in Irish. Can't see them at all.
Oh, yeah, I could see them. Just have to go to view.
I love my life.
Can I bring the... Can I come over there?
Come over...
Come over and view it with you folks?
Well, we can't see it.
We can't see it either.
No, we're working through it, Nick, so... Yeah, just one minute.
Oh, it wasn't plugged in.
There are always two fixes to everything. Turn it off and turn it back on, or plug it in?
And this was gonna be an interesting program.
It's going to be, not going to, it wasn't going to, it's gonna happen. I have faith in David and Wade and the chief. Sorry about that. Nick, maybe while they're trying to work on that, you can just talk a little bit about the History Committee and the work that you guys are doing.
The History Committee, just so everybody knows, we are looking for more members. We need more people. I'm gonna be posting on Facebook, and there are so many locations in Tocco with the 1,200 or 1,300 photographs we have of Old Tocco. There's still a lot of places that we don't have photographs, and I'm gonna put a list out, and hopefully, hopefully, people have it in shoeboxes, photo albums, so that's really one thing I'm hoping. We have a lot of programs coming up. I'm gonna be doing the... Oh, God, I'm having a senior moment right now.
It's okay, I have them all the time.
But, oh, I'm gonna be doing the Tocco Marble Industry for the Crestwood Historical Society, and that program will be April 13th on a Saturday. And it's very comprehensive. It's a great program. I think I spent the last year working on it, so it should come out really well.
You mentioned pictures, people can send pictures and anything that they have at home, and I actually, I have some pictures for you that someone brought in for me to give the History Committee, and I haven't done that, so I'll give those to you.
Yeah, we just received a box of photographs and paraphernalia from Ernie Zaki's family, so I'm gonna go through that this Wednesday.
Looks like it's working.
Now we're cooking.
Okay, Nick.
All right, the photograph you see on the title sheet, this is the entrance to the Lyric Theater. Lyric Theater was around for 30 years. It was from 1922 to 1952. The Lyric Theater is... Let's go to the next photo. Where was the Lyric Theater? We all know the parking lot across the street from Village Hall. The building just to the right of it, the old bank building, that was the location of the Lyric Theater. And if you see the entrance to the old bank, the beige building on the right, that entrance was the same entrance to the Lyric Theater. This photo is in front of the Lyric Theater. If you see the gentleman on the left, that's Walter Leonhart. He was the owner of the Lyric Theater for just about 25 years. Right behind him is the parking lot in front of the Village Hall today. On the right is the entrance to the Lyric Theater. Walter always had a soft spot for kids. Most families brought the kids to the Lyric Theater on Saturdays. It was like having a babysitter for 10 cents. They'd be there for over four hours. There was always a double feature, cartoons, newsreels, and the Lyric Theater held 279 kids, so it's a pretty good crowd. One thing Walter tried to do throughout his years with the Lyric Theater, he always held drives to raise money, to get... Right now, this is a food drive going on. Children could bring a can of soup, anything, any food items, and it got them free admission to the movies. Next. Here's another picture of the Lyric Theater with the food drive going on. That picture is 1932. You can see Main Street was all cobblestone. Another picture of the front of the theater, and this one, they're having a clothing drive. I put down just for overseas relief, but Walter ran food drives and clothing drives for the needy right here in town. So, he was a real civic leader. The guy did so much for the village. And here's Walter. Again, great person. He bought the theater from the Rose Brothers, who started it in 1922. They held the theater till 1927, and then Walter bought the theater from 1927 to 1952, and he paid $100 for the theater. I love this photo. It's one of the paying customers, probably giving them money instead of cans and clothing. Walter had a dual role. When the theater was full, he went up and he manned the movie projector and ran the shows. No air conditioning in them days, just fans. Here we are with the theater. The inside, no center aisles, so you really didn't want to get stuck in the center, and I didn't know if they had any Johns either. Again, 273 seats in the theater, no air conditioning, just fans. Next. Here's a metal drive, no, this is the rubber drive, again, to support the war effort in the 1940s. Here's a metal drive. Just take your headpost from your bed, bring it, and go to the theater for free. Here's a picture looking west. You're in the mid, you're in front of the Lyric Theater. If you look in the distance, you'll see the building, I think it's the Tocco Train Station Cafe, so you could orient yourself. And again, another metal drive. Next. This is marquee with the theater shows that they're gonna be putting on. And just an interesting point, the Lyric Theater back in the '30s, early '40s, one of the patrons that used to attend the Tocco Lyric Theater was John F. Kennedy. John F. Kennedy grew up in Bronxville on Pont Field Road and used to come to the other side of the tracks, come to Tocco, and used to frequent the Lyric Theater, and I thought that was a pretty interesting fact. The Lyric Theater didn't do just movies. The Lyric Theater was a lot more than that. In the early days of the Lyric Theater, they used to have vaudeville shows. The singer Al Jolson performed there, and there were quite a few other big-name celebrities. They also had concerts, stage shows, so it was a lot more than just a movie theater. It was really the heart of Tocco. That's where you went. TVs weren't around, and it was just a great influence on the village. That's it, folks. I hope you...
Thank you so much, Nick. Thank you. Keep those coming.
Oh, I got a good one next time.
Good, I'll get those pictures to you. Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to public hearings. So, today we have a public hearing to consider proposed modifications. Thank you. Proposed modifications to the village code as it relates to short-term rentals. And so may I have a motion to open the hearing regarding short... Somebody second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, the public hearing is open to hear from residents and any interested parties regarding modifications to the village code regarding short-term rentals, also known as Airbnbs. The proposed legislation, a draft of it was posted. If there's anyone that would like to weigh in, you may do so now. If anyone that's here in the audience would like to come forward? No one? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to weigh in? And even if you did not read this draft, you may still weigh in regarding your thoughts on Airbnbs and the village allowing them or not, or any restrictions you think that we should be considering. No one yet? Gary, would you like to just go over a little bit of this?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I could hit the high points. So, what this legislation would do would basically be prohibiting short-term rentals in residential areas. Short-term rentals defined as something less than 30 days. Now, the big exemptions here, the big exemption is that if it's somebody's primary residence, then they can do the short-term rentals. So, that means the short-term rentals can't be the primary use of that property, so that would basically prohibit investors from coming in, buying properties, and just renting them for these short-term rentals. The law also has a component that would have a registration requirement, so they would have to register the property every year, and the registration's good because it tells you, you know, who you need to contact in case there's an emergency or something of that nature. And lastly, the other large component here would be that it would also require inspections of the property every year. So, our building department would be able to go in there to make sure that they're compliant, you know, with all the building codes and regulations. So, it prevents somebody from, you know, converting a basement into a living area where they would have a new kitchen and things like that, where that wouldn't be allowed. So, that's kind of the major high points of this law that we need to discuss. You know, we can pick and choose which ones we would want, or we don't want any, we can do that also.
Okay, so what we'll do is, we will leave the hearing open until next month, and I'll ask the board to hold off on weighing in until then, and that way we can take a look at this a little closer. If there are any changes that we want to propose, then we can do that. And then, next month, if anyone would like to weigh in, you have one more opportunity. We'll leave the public hearing open until then. Okay? Yes? So, may I have a motion? Thank you, to our clerk. May I have a motion to keep the public hearing open?
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so we will keep it open until March. The next up is adoption of the minutes, so may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 8th meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, this brings us to the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items only. If there's anyone that's present in the room that would like to come forward, you may come now and address the board on any agenda items at this time. Anyone on Zoom? No? Okay, all right. So, we'll move to our resolution. So, the first one, David, can I ask you to talk a little bit about CityNet? I mean, unfortunately, John is not here to do so, but I'll let you.
So, yeah, I'm not gonna take credit for a lot of the hard work of scheduling interviews with companies and getting proposals and things like that. John did a lot of that work, but we did look at several different proposals for online tax software, and a lot of them, other communities are using. In Westchester, there's four or five that other communities are using. CityNet is definitely a popular one. We kind of honed in on this one regarding the fee structure. We have more say in how much the fee is for an ACH check or the debit, so that's kind of what we liked about this one. We also liked how we can kind of add on to this at some point. This is, we're gonna focus it on the tax, get this up and running, hopefully by June 1st, to get everyone paid, but then we're gonna be able to, you know, kind of do different modules and take different payments for like parking, new parking permits, and, you know, even the building department, things like that. So, it's kind of a comprehensive solution to all our payments, but focusing on the tax for the first portion.
That's great. And this is in direct response to many residents who've contacted us, saying, you know, "When are you gonna get this online? When are you gonna get this online?" So, I appreciate the work that the village administrator and John Sullivan have done to research and vet and get us to one of the vendors, and thankfully, we have trustee Engelbert, who reviewed, helped to review our contracts, and, you know, she's got expertise in that area, so thank you, trustee Engelbert. So, may I have a motion to authorize the village administrator to execute an agreement with CityNet for online tax payments?
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So, this should make Suzanne Servin very happy tonight. I thought that she would come on and say, "I see it on the agenda." So, may I have a motion to authorize the closing of the following capital projects? Before we do, David, do we have the amounts of the police department vehicle and what the total was?
Yes, these were, just off the top of my head, I believe, these were from the budget of last year, so it was $70,000 for the police vehicle, and I believe the $105 for...
For the road verse service. So, may I have a motion to just close out these capital projects?
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And can I have a motion to authorize the approval of the vouchers, so we can pay our bills in the amount of $615,410.34?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that'll bring us to departmental reports. So, chief? So, we have Chief Larry Rota.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to start off by commending ECap for putting on a wonderful celebration for MLK Day, and I'd also like to thank our police explorers who assisted the night before in setting up all the tables and chairs. It was a great bonding experience for them. They were doing a great thing to the community and service, so I'd like to commend that, and all the members who helped out from evac. It was a great day, first time in a few years, so it was a nice event. January 26th, Gary's gonna love this one, the Tocco Traffic Unit was doing some commercial vehicle enforcement. What we do with that is we look to enforce vehicles that are commercial, that come through the village with safety violations such as loud mufflers, loose cargo, tax violation, stickers that they don't pay for, and overweight vehicles. So, a total of 37 summonses was issued on that day by the traffic unit. I'm also gonna remind residents with the wireless alarm system, such as Ring with the sensors. The cold weather seems to be working on some of the batteries, so I would say, "Check your battery in your app status on your sensor," so it doesn't go off in the middle of the night or cause any issues. Cold weather really takes a toll on them, especially on the windows. I'd like to remind all residents to... I'd like to remind all residents to sign up for the Rave Alerting. We've had success with it, more people are coming on. But again, every medium, I'm going to remind people, you go onto the village website and you can click the link to rave and have that platform. This past month, our entire detective division attended hate crime investigation training. It was a well-attended event, and they learned some great stuff, and it was by respected leaders in that field. We also had officers attend specialized de-escalation training in Westchester County Police Academy. Also, we had a supervisor staff meeting. All the supervisors had a full day of training going over policies, procedures for the year and how we're going to move forward. And now for the crime tip of the month.
Trustee Engelbert's favorite part.
Starting to get a fan group on this. Okay, so crime tip of the month is walk into your vehicle late at night. So walk into your vehicle late at night, you always want to have your key out, you don't want to be fumbling in your pants or purse for your keys, have it out ready to go. Try to park in a well-lit area. If you're parking during the day, try to see where lights are and park near a light so that the area's lit. Know your surroundings while you're walking out there. Don't be on your phone looking at email, Instagram, any of that stuff. Know who's around you, in front of you, behind you, and any noises. Once you enter your car, lock your car door. And also, if it's super late and you just have that funny feeling of you just don't feel right, let your coworker, friend, or family know that you're walking out to the car. And I don't want to say stay on the phone with them all the time because you want to have your observation out to see what's in front of you. But you can, but make sure you're looking at them in front of you and around you as well. And if you're on the phone with them, just let them know what's going on. Or you could just tell them, I'll call you when I get in the car. So that's the crime tip of the month. I hope that helps. And again, this is just for general knowledge in case you're in an area. We don't see any crime like this occurring in Tuckahoe right now, but it's something that I've seen in surrounding counties, and I just want to be alert and aware regarding car safety and entering your car at night.
Do we post this, post this on the police social media and?
We will. I'll do a post on that so everyone can see it and share it.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Well, well, chief, don't go yet because we're, we want to celebrate your birthday with you and sing happy birthday. So can everybody join us in singing happy birthday to the chief?
Yes. You start. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Chief Rhoda. Happy birthday to you.
And he's blushing.
That was very special.
Happy birthday.
Forward for that. Again, have a safe February. I'll see you the end of the month, and we'll be seeing each other as well. So thank you, everybody, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Superintendent Frank DiMarco? Welcome back, Frank.
Yeah, thank you. My birthday falls on a Friday, what happens?
I know, right? It has to fall on the day of.
I'll wait a couple of years. I want to thank Pat Murd Talk for allowing me time to speak tonight because I know Pat could go on and on and on, so.
We had, we had a little talk.
Yes, yes. So I'm going to do all the speaking tonight, so I'm, I'm going to make it short. I just want to talk about a couple of projects that are going on in Tuckahoe. For one, it's the gas upgrade on Grant between Sagamore and Fairview. That's completed. So we're looking to pave early spring, and hopefully with all the other projects that I'm going to mention right now. Mid-in-place, we had a sewer upgrade. That work is completed as well. So that will also be paved. Again, paving is from curb to curb. So the entire road where the construction had began and ended will be paved. We have a new project coming up, a new Conradus and gas upgrade, and that's on Chestnut leading into Bella Vista from Circuit to middle of Monroe, middle of Bella Vista before Monroe and Coolidge as well. And speaking to Conradus, and they just have gas leaks that, that are uncontrollable right now, so they, they decided to come in there and upgrade the entire lines, and who am I to say they can't? We need them to come in there and upgrade. So they should be done within a couple of months, and we could have that road paved from curb to curb as well. So all these roads will be restored by the time early spring gets here. That's all I really have, but I'm asking everybody to follow us on Twitter, Facebook, I don't know if anybody has, but, and, and Instagram. We've been posting a lot of information to everybody out there. Holiday weeks, scheduled pickups, recycling garbage. But this past week, we started giving clippets of videos of some of the work that we've completed for that week, and we plan on doing that moving forward. So give a little bit of an understanding of what we do at DPW, maybe give ride with the sanitation driver and on a recycling day and see what's out there, what they're picking up, or whether it be pouring concrete. We're trimming trees right now, repairing roads, doing potholes, planting, so it gives us the time to get caught up a little bit. And that's all I really have.
Thanks, Frank. Are there any questions for Frank?
Yes.
Okay.
So Frank, with the gas leaks on from Circuit to Bella Vista, for the residents who park on the street, are there other places that they should be parking their car during that, during that time? Or can the cars remain on the street during that construction work?
David and I met with Conradus, and they're going to be working on segments at a time, not working on the entire road. So a notice will go out, so everybody will be informed, and no parking signs will be posted in those designated areas. So they're not going to rip up the entire road, they're going to do segments at a time, and they should well inform the residents as well.
Okay, and it's just the roads, not the sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to be clear, it'll be just during the day, during the construction hours, that they would have to move their car from a certain section, not during the night?
Yeah, and that time to give it turned back to parking.
Thank you, Frank. We have the director of the library, Swadish Pasananda.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, Swadish.
I'd like to start with the. Hello. With the good news, former legislator Damon Moore and the Board of Legislators, they were able to secure funding in the amount of twelve thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars for a library program for year 2024, and we are very thankful for that. And also, library, I'd like to thank Revolutionary Westchester 250 for sponsoring the Recutic Sergeant on Saturday, January 27th. We had over sixty people attend, including Senator Shelley Meyer, who gave historical performer Michael Grillo a special award, trustee Josh Gashon, local historian, and many Tuckahoe Middle School students who attended as part of a class assignment, which we were very happy collaborate with our schools. And also, a special thanks to the Tuckahoe PTA and Student Volunteer who decorated the community center today with artwork from third to fifth grader William McCartell School. And love your library day. February is Valentine's Day, and it's a library love day. Love your library day, and it's, we are celebrating on February 14th. It's Wednesday, so it's 10 to 1:30 and 4:30 to 8:00 PM. So you treat yourself on Valentine's Day and visit the library. We have some sweets and learn about our upcoming events and the exciting plans, and share what you love about the library to enter a twenty-five-dollar Starbucks gift card, which is sponsored by Friends of the Library. And if you want to get certified for CPR, so it's for ages fourteen adults, they can get their CPR certification by signing up at the library website. And we are offering two programs. One is on Saturday, February 24th, and the second one is going to be March 9th, and the timing is 12 to 4:00. Registration is necessary, and you only have to attend one class. So as you know, the library is in our community center, we are back in full swing with all our program. So we also doing a crafting beautiful beaded earring, which is all the, you can make as many earrings as you want, and they have to give one, donate one pair to the Women's Shelter for each pair they craft. So it's a very popular program. It's going to be on February 7th at 5:00 PM for ages ten and plus. Also, if you like visiting the National Parks, so US National Park, this program is going to be on Thursday, February 15 at 6:30 PM. And it's a, on Zoom, by the expert, travel expert Chris McCormick is going to give you an insider guide to visiting the US National Park. And also, it's a, on, it's a hybrid program, Tuckahoe History of African American, which is going to be on Wednesday, February 28th at 6:30 PM. And this program is offered by our town historian. It's going to be talk about the African American in the village of Tuckahoe from the town's early beginning to Martin Luther King Historic March on Washington, on Washington in 1963. Also, our, our regular program, wellness program, we do the gentle chia yoga and Tai Chi. So these programs are now hybrid, so you can come to the community center or you can join on Zoom. And then there's a senior strength training, which is on Mondays, February 12 and 26 at 5:15 PM. And our English as second language programs, which we offer on Wednesday, is, are very popular, so we divide it into two for big, one is beginners, which takes place on Wednesday at 10:30, and the second session is for advanced, which is at 11:45. And the classes, second session is like at least, we have fifteen to sixteen students in that class. And for the children, we have, we are trying to add some new programs on Saturday also, so parents who work during the week, they can come and bring their kids for the program. Dani Dooshy does the puppet show, and Miss Elaine is also going to do Saturday Story Time. And tomorrow, we have bilingual Chinese New Year Story Time at 11:00 AM. And then on Friday, we have bilingual Story Time with Miss Ines on February 9th at 11:00 AM. And there's Mrs. Elaine also, the Sing Along, which is going to be on Monday, February 12. So there are a lot of more programs. If I stay here, it will be too long, so I just want, if you are interested, please check our website. If any question, give us a call. And also, I want to let you know, we are now have, you can check out Roku Sticks from Tuckahoe Library, so people who don't have Netflix and all these, so these Roku Stick you have. So people who live in Tuckahoe, Westchester, Bronxville, library, with their library card, they can borrow the Roku Stick for two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have anything, Camille? David? Gary? Okay, we'll move this along. The next meeting for the village, the Board of Trustees meeting will be on March 11th at 7:00 PM. So for those of you who rightfully so thought it was March 4th, please make a change on your calendar. Always double-check on the village calendar to make sure that you have the date right. Sometimes we make changes for various reasons. So the next village board meeting is March 11th, again at 7:00 PM. And that'll bring us to Board of Trustee member reports, and we'll start with trustee Lang.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'm going to report on beautification. I recently spoke with Mrs. Susan Shimara. She informed me that the 2024 fundraiser letters have been sent out, both to residences and businesses. Hanging baskets and potageraniums have been ordered, and they should be in on the second week of May. Those of you who may not receive the fundraiser letter, you can always send donations to Tuckahoe Beautification Association at PO Box 142, Tuckahoe, New York, 10707. And the community center, I met with the director, John Glusley. He said with everything going on with the library renovation, his space is very limited. However, he still manages to squeeze in as many organizations and events, and events as he possibly can. You know, he does his best down there, and we all, we all believe he's doing a great job. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'm just double-checking that there's no more online payments for the beautification committee? I know we'd set that up? Yeah, okay, so just, I think so, right? Deputy Mayor helped them set up online, so are they still accepting that? Can you just find out?
I will, I will.
To make sure, because I know they'll get many more donations if they also receive them online.
Well, we appreciate that, Deputy Mayor. Thank you very much.
On the letter that went out?
It's, it's on there. Okay. If, yeah, so if you received the letter, look for the QR code so that you can donate online, and you don't have to send in a physical check. I know somebody asked me why we were so antiquated. Some people still use checks, you know, we try to give options, so we have some options there. And, and I just want to encourage people to please do donate to the beautification committee. Everyone always raves about, you know, how gorgeous the village looks during the holiday and during spring, and donations are needed to make that happen. Trustee Gachon?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll start with the Historic Preservation Commission. Their next meeting is February 28th at 6:30 PM. Well, they're, they will be voting on 230 White Plains Road, and that will take place right here. And move on to the History Committee. Nick updated us on a few of the things that were going on, and so did Swadish, but I did attend the Recruiting Sergeant event on January 27th with Mike and Maria Grillo. It was standing room only. I'm not sure how many recruits they got from that, but it was, it was very informative, and it was really neat to kind of see how Tuckahoe and Westchester played into the bigger picture of the Revolutionary War regionally and nationally. So really good event. We talked about the donation of materials to the History Committee, and their Facebook reach, social media, very popular, thirty-three hundred and seventy-six views in January, and the most popular photo was a Tuckahoe World War I Honor Roll poster, which I want to show next month, Nick, if that's, that's okay. It's a really, really neat artifact, and any history person will be nerding out over this thing. It's, it's, it's really cool. Again, they meet on Wednesdays right here in Village Hall from 9:30 to 12:00, and there are multiple ways that you can be involved, so reach out to them. We'll move on to veterans. Information and applications for the veterans banners will be available on Wednesday, this Wednesday. It'll be published on the Eastchester Veterans Facebook page, on the village website, we'll get something up on the TV channel. And we'll also be reaching out to the individuals who have banners in Eastchester to see if they want to bring those back to Tuckahoe to put up here. On March 27th, mark your calendars, it is the Veterans Pact Act event that will be held at the community center. All veterans are welcome. There'll be VA counselors on hand, other community resources, including VA disability counselors who can help with disability ratings. There'll be free tablets for qualified veterans, so I suggest that you come, bring your DD214. Festivities start at 11:00. The mobile health clinic will be there as well. It is, it's a really nice event. We've held them at the college before, and it's, it's great that we're bringing this here to Tuckahoe, so I thank all the folks who have been involved with this. And on Wednesday, February 7th, State Senator Shelley Mayer's office is hosting Valentines for veterans. That is from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM at the Will Library. Bring yourself, bring your creativity, and come on down and, and make some Valentines for veterans. We'll be sending a lot of those up to the veterans home in Montrose. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Engelbert?
Awesome. Okay, so we're going to start with the Eastchester Union Free School District. I'm going to kind of go a bit rogue here and just spend a minute to talk about delays in the financial aid process, because I know many of our Eastchester seniors are, and their families are probably sweating that to say a little bit. So the federal government will not be processing and returning FAFSA, which is the Free Application for Student Financial Aid, returning that information back to institutions until mid-March. So those packages that you would have gotten, kind of about even now, the institutions are not going to have the data even to start that process until March. And so what that means, good seniors out there, is that many of your prospective institutions are going to struggle to get out that package information to you in any sort of timely way. So here's a word of advice. I talk to institutions all day, every day. It is important for you, all you seniors out there, to remain in close contact with your target institutions, particularly ones that you really are, that your dream schools might, might we say. So make sure that they know that you are super interested and enrolling and that your financial. and that your financial aid package will be a key determinant in whether you enroll or not. Now, in all likelihood, that National College Decision Day, or May 1st, will be delayed at many institutions. But I want you to watch carefully at your institutions, because this is going to vary, and it's not a federal or state thing, it's an institution by institution thing. So the key takeaway here is to contact your institution's financial aid office and make sure that they know that you are interested in the institution. Financial aid is a factor, and you want them to keep you at the top of their top of their list. Okay, kind of off the road kind of bit on Eastchester. The other thing I want to highlight in Eastchester this this month is that there will be a reading of On the Line by Jennifer Jones, who happened to be the very first African American Rockette at the Waverly Gym on February 9th at 4:00 PM. And so this is available to all students in the district who are in grades K to 5. A friend of mine's mom was a Rockette, super fun, super exciting, but Jennifer Jones was the first African American one. She is also going to be doing some creative movement as part of that, so get your high kicks ready. I think this is a super cool way, an interactive way, to really kick off Black History Month this year. Okay, Tukahoe Public Library. Of course, Swadish gave a comprehensive report, and my big Roku sticks is going to be like my thing, kind of this thing. But kind of a bit more detail for you all. There are two flavors of Roku sticks. One that is yum, Netflix, Disney, Acorn TV, or one that is Apple TV and and Peacock. Now, my own family cut the cord with broadcast TV a few years back, so Roku is super important in our lives. So I can strongly recommend that this is a super fun and high value service that the library is offering. Though I do more in that common experience of broadcast TV, but, you know, horse barn out. That's kind of nothing to do about that kind of now. The other thing Swadish didn't didn't mention is that the renovation is full throttle and on pace and on track, which is amazing, kind of knock on knock on wood on that. And so again, I want to make sure to thank legislator Amy Pollan, Senator Shelley Mayer, county executive George Latimer, and the community fund for their support for this renovation. I'd also kind of put the spotlight on all of you out in the Tukahoe community that, you know, the library has given us so much. It might be a good time to kind of give them kind of so much as we go into kind of the kind of maintenance and enhancement phase that we need in this in this renovation. Last but not least, is the Tukahoe Environmental and Sustainability Community. In the coming months, the TESSC community has really identified kind of four, three major focus areas. And thank you Frank DiMarco for kind of bringing some discipline kind of to to that. This includes kind of launching a community garden, securing additional grant funding to further invest in stormwater basin grills, and expanding the uptake and visibility of our food scrap recycling service here in the village. Oh, look at I love this. I love this interactive Zoom. I love it. Now, if you are interested in getting involved in these activities, and who wouldn't be, please contact the Chair, Donald Crosby, who's, you know, an icon in our in our village, or myself. Contact information is available from the TESSC page on the Village of Tukahoe website. And to all of those, all of you out there who are celebrating the Lunar New Year, my best wishes to you and your families in this year of the dragon.
Thank you, trustee. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I hope everybody is well. Planning from planning and zoning, they are both adjourned this month, so no meetings. The Comprehensive Plan Committee, however, has been in full, working in full force. They started meeting under the kind of direction of former Deputy Mayor Howell. I just really want to take a moment to thank the committee members who are already so engaged and so thoughtful about the process and thinking about the future of our village and our community. They're here on evenings and Saturdays, and they're really working diligently. They put together some interview questions to bring to the the prospective planners, and now we're in the process of doing interviews. So again, I just really want to give them a shout out for all the hard work. They're they're really thinking about the future of Tukahoe. From the seniors, the seniors have two luncheons this coming week, next week, Valentine's Day and one for Lunar New Year. So check that out. In March, they are also, no, sorry, yeah. Yeah, March 12th, they're actually doing a Black History Month program on March 12th, a conversation with Grammy winner Natasha Yvette Williams, who I think actually just won a Grammy last night. So that looks to be a really interesting program. And we lost two long-term members of our community that I just want to acknowledge. Lorraine Mastur Giovanni from Marbledale Road passed away recently, and as did Peter Patrick Gallo, who was 101 years old. So our condolences to those families, and that is all my have for tonight.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And my my comments are short today also. To kick off Black History Month, I attended an unveiling of a painting that was created by Max Pierce, son of Tukahoe, happens to be a Harlem Globetrotter, and he's also an artist, and he does a lot of art around social justice issues. So I contacted George Latimer, our county executive, and asked if we could do something with a piece of art that was purchased by Backyard Sports during one of the one of his art gallery installations that he had last year or the year before. And so he has a a piece of art that has been permanently installed at the Westchester County Center in the Hall of Fame Room. It was really a beautiful ceremony to honor the work that he does. He's such a wonderful person, and obviously, his family and and all of Tukahoe is very proud of him. So if you have a chance, Tukahoe, I think that's the only piece of art that's been installed at the Westchester County Center for good. And there was a ceremony, you may have seen it on News 12. One of the things that they mentioned is that for games moving forward, they will be making the announcement that his art is there with a little description of, you know, the artwork. So we're really proud of of Max. He also, well, also, I want to mention the MLK Breakfast, and to thank Deputy Mayor Cronin and the entire, the rest of the board. Kind of handed her the baton, because I couldn't be there, and asked if she would help lead, you know, the charge with making sure that things went smoothly, and it was a resounding success. I think we the E cap raised nearly $8,000 for the programs that they 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 need the money for students after school programs and other programs. We had a couple of young people who participated that I want to recognize. Eastchester High School student Charis Dubulay Harris, who sang a spiritual, and the youngest poet laureate in Westchester, Harmony Hopwood, 15 years old. She came and she did a rendition for the community. So thank you to the two students who did not count it robbery to come on that day to come and participate in the program. And regarding Black History Month, I just want to encourage everyone, you know, we celebrated in February, but every day really is Black History Month. Black History Month is American history. And so I encourage everyone to find time with your families and with your children to, you know, research and think about some people who you may not normally hear about and learn about the the contributions that Black Americans have made to the fabric of our of our country and our community. We have many right here in Tukahoe. Max is one of them. So happy Black History Month to everyone. And Nick Zandano talked about next time that he comes around, he's going to talk about the history of the marbles, you know, marble in Tukahoe. And so next month, we should have the criteria. We presented former chief Costanzo with the Marble Award, the first in Tukahoe. And so we want to continue that tradition. And next month, we are working on the criteria so that residents can nominate your neighbors to receive the award this year and in the years to come. So that's that's pretty much it for me. And that brings us to a second opportunity to address the board. If there's anyone here that would like to, you're welcome to now.
Hi. Rita Master Veridino.
Hi, Rita.
I'm here to thank the Village of Tukahoe. Thank you all for allowing our team to have the 12th Annual Forever Railing for Regina Blood Drive we just had this past Saturday at the Tukahoe Community Center. Without everyone's support, we couldn't do it, and it's it's tremendous success. I wish to thank, besides all of you, the Police Department, John Galuzzi, Volunteers Neighbors and Friends, and Swadish, and the library, who worked around us, and they're already working around, they were very gracious. At Saturday's blood drive, we were able to collect 49 life-saving donations, which in turn can help 147 patients. When blood is divided into its components, you can actually help more than one patient per pint. Six more people tried to donate but were turned away for procedural reasons, and we want to thank them for trying. I want to thank my friends, the Forever Railing for Regina Relay for Life team, including John and Judy Fix, whose names were, of course, being mentioned when I walked in the room tonight. They're fabulous, and they were there on Saturday. We had a raffle and a bake sale. We raised over $4,000 for the American Cancer Society, but we're still raising money. We are, I'd like to thank, congratulate the 28 people who won our raffle prizes, and most importantly, the people who donated blood, because that is the gift of life, and there's no substitute for human blood. I'd like to announce that everybody should watch for the upcoming program, Stick a Fork in Cancer. It's sponsored by local restaurants in Tukahoe and Eastchester, and it's going to run between February 26 and March 24. So we'll get more information about that in the future. We don't have all the details now, but everybody wins when you stick a fork in cancer. The restaurants get business, we dine out or in, and the American Cancer Society gets 10% of the check, so it's really wonderful. And then finally, I'd like to say, ask me about the Eastchester Relay for Life for the American Cancer Society.
Tell us about the Relay for Life.
We're going to hold it as we do every year, well, recently every year, at Lake Isle on March, on May 11th. May 11th, it's an outdoor event. All the students, many, many students in our community are involved in Eastchester and Tukahoe and many community groups. We always welcome more. It's a wonderful event. We start our teams way ahead of time, and that's what we've already done. We're already starting to raise money. But the event is, it's like a party, a picnic. It's great. The students entertain. We have all kinds of activities for all ages, a little more fundraising and some solemn moments too. But it's actually a wonderful event. So besides asking here, I hope people will ask in the next few months, and I'll be happy to share information and invite anyone on the Channel I team, or you can start your own team.
Or maybe you can come back. You know, sometimes people need to hear it closer too, so maybe you come back in the next month or so. But thank you very much for all that you're doing. You know, you are truly an example of the kind of people that we have living in Tukahoe who care so much about your neighbors and abroad, not just in Tukahoe. So thank you.
Thank you for saying that. And in a meeting with so many people doing so much, it's very nice to hear, but it's nothing compared to what everyone else is doing. Thank you.
It is something. It is not nothing. Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the board?
I'm Virginia Marciano, 21th Circle. I just wanted to know where I can find out more information about the B and Bs.
So if you go on our web, on our website, you'll there's, yeah, the the actual draft of the legislation is is present there.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, and if you'd like, if you want a copy, a hard copy, you can just come on in, and we can give you a copy.
I'll come in here to the.
To Village Hall.
Village Hall. Okay, yeah, my sister lives in Florida, and they have lots and lots of B and Bs there, and they they can really get out of hand if we're not very careful about them. So I just, you know, you we're going to discuss it.
Here, come take mine. Yeah, just just take it so you have it, and you don't have to worry about coming back, and take a look at it, and feel free to weigh in. Sure, you you can go back and weigh in. You can weigh in even if you haven't read it.
Okay, yeah, well, I I don't like to do that. That's why that's why I wanted to do.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
So next month, we are gonna, the the hearing is still open. So next month, you can come back once you've read it. You can always contact anyone on this board also to weigh in if you'd like, or our village administrator. The next meeting is March 11th, correct? Sure. Anyone else would like to address the board on any agenda or non-agenda items? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, we're here, Suzanne.
I want to thank you that you did this for the pact. That's wonderful. You are a special. And I also want to say that I think it's wonderful that we started committed, and we are here. Who knew that we had that? And we do some, of course, things that we all do.
So I think the Tukahoe History Committee posts these on social media, Suzanne. Is there?
You know, not everybody was.
So what are you recommending?
Well, I was thinking of the way that people started this program for all of people.
If you'd like to start one, we will support you in that. Thank you, Suzanne. Is there? You're welcome. Anyone else would like to address the board? Is there anyone else on Zoom? Okay, so if that's all, we, the village board needs to go into executive session for personnel issues. So we will be doing that now. Say again? Oh, so may I have a motion to go into executive session?
No, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So the board will be going into executive session now. For those of you who are going home, good night. And thank you for those of you who continue to come and contribute to the life of your community by participating in your meetings. Thank you.